September 30th, 2020, and it is nine o'clock here in the center of hearing room. We are going to begin our weekly board session, and as always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd please join me.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We don't have anybody sign up for public comments, so we're going to jump right into our agenda, and first up is Katrina Rothenberger with a COVID-19 update. Morning, Katrina.
Is that still going on?
All right, good morning. Katrina Rothenberger, Public Health Division Director for Marion County Health and Human Services. As of today, September 30th, there are 4,778 cases of COVID-19 in Marion County. Ninety-six people have died, and 53,441 people have been tested. Our positivity rate for the week of September 21st through the 27th was 10.3%. Last week, Oregon saw its highest day of new cases since the pandemic started, and Marion County continues to see a large number of cases, with 229 cases the week of the 21st through the 27th, and 203 cases the week prior. So it's still important that everyone remembers that we all have a part to play in helping slow the spread, and small gatherings have been a significant factor in our high numbers, and I wanted to urge everyone to remember to keep gatherings to 10 people or fewer, especially as we come up on the holiday season. We are working closely with our community partners to get testing clinics back up and running. There will be two pop-up testing events in Woodburne on October 8th and 15th. They'll both be at Woodburne Ambulance from 12 to 3:00 p.m., and we'll be sharing this information on our social media pages. And as parents and students navigate their new learning environment and working environment, I just wanted to share a few tips that may help folks. Get familiar with the learning platform that your child will be using. Many online platforms have reminders and planning tools to help you and your child stay aware and on track. Learn your child's daily school schedule and plan to be available for the times that they might need support. For example, help, some children might need help logging in at the start of the day. And prepare for interruptions. Will your home network handle both you and your child working online at the same time? And then establishing a routine. You can write up a schedule that includes wake-up times, meals, breaks, class transitions, and times for online versus offline work during your workday, so that everyone is on the same page about daily expectations. And then, we do have a flu presentation after this, but I do keep wanting to talk about the flu. We're entering flu season, and we want to make sure that everyone is reminded to get a flu shot. This will really help reduce the strain of respiratory viruses on our healthcare system. Flu shots are available through most healthcare providers, clinics, and many pharmacies. Flu and COVID-19 are both contagious respiratory illnesses, but they're caused by different viruses. And then change in loss or taste or smell is not a symptom of the flu, but is of COVID-19. People can be contagious with COVID-19 for at least 10 days after signs or symptoms first appear, and up to two days before signs and symptoms appear. And then most people with the flu are contagious for about one day before they show symptoms, and can remain contagious for about seven days. And then while flu and COVID spread in similar ways, COVID has been shown to have more of the super-spreading events, meaning it can spread quickly and easily to a lot of people. And then last, I just want to remind everyone that the state has created several funding opportunities for those who need to self-quarantine or isolate, or have been affected by COVID-19, and we have all this information on our website at covid19.mchealthy.net under Additional Resources. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Katrina. Are there any questions?
No.
All right. Are we going to move right into our next item, our health item? Okay, very good. Commissioner Cameron, I think you're up.
I'll get ready while she's talking.
Did you know that this year I'm going to give you the shot? Were you aware of that?
Whoa!
I'm getting my armored coat.
I was an EMT for 20 years, but I don't remember giving any shot, but you had to jab an orange, and even it looked battered, so I'm going to help you a lot.
You're on, we got it. I'm Dawn Lehman, Marion County Health and Human Services, Public Health Nurse Program Manager. So, you have to ask, why does Commissioner Cameron make such a fanfare of getting his flu shot every year?
Yeah.
He likes the attention.
It's because he knows and wants you to know the importance of getting a flu vaccine. Sure, he knows that by getting a flu shot, he's protecting himself from getting the flu. He doesn't want to go through weeks of feeling tired and being ill, but he is more altruistic than just that. He knows that by getting a flu shot, he is protecting Marion County by not contracting and passing around the flu. He is protecting our economy. Thousands of dollars are lost in revenue and labor costs every year due to flu absences. He is protecting small business owners who have small profit margins and can't afford preventable days off. He is protecting the contract worker who may not get a paycheck to buy groceries if they're in bed with the flu. He is protecting our emergency response system, our ambulances and paramedic services. Last year in Marion County, at the peak of flu season, ambulances had to wait in line at emergency room doors because the need for medical transport caused by the flu was so high. High levels of flu response calls stretch response time to other health emergencies, such as heart attack and stroke. In a year when PPE equipment, such as masks, gloves, and gowns are so precious, Commissioner Cameron knows the importance of reducing the burden on our emergency response and our hospitals. Commissioner Cameron also knows that by getting his flu vaccine, he is protecting his older relatives and friends who are most vulnerable to the flu. He is protecting a staff member's newborn baby who can't get a flu shot yet. He is protecting a grocery clerk's daughter who is fighting cancer and can't receive a flu vaccine at this time. By reducing the spread of the flu, he is protecting schoolchildren with autoimmune diseases who can't get a flu vaccine either. In a year of many, many losses, we can't afford more losses due to a preventable virus. Commissioner Cameron knows the importance of getting a flu shot. That's why he's sharing getting his flu vaccination with you today. Now it's your turn. Be a flu-shot hero, like Commissioner Cameron.
That was good.
That's why.
That was really good.
That's why, because I just want to be a role model.
So, I just said mine yesterday, and you make a big deal of it. What's the difference?
Are you going to put the needle in my arm?
No, I thought that was right.
We have professionals for that.
Sam, I trust you. You're out.
I'm not as steady as I used to be.
Right over the left. Let's see, I got to throw a no-hitter tonight, so let's go with the left. Nope. Oh. Yes. It asked me if I'd eaten anything in the last four hours. That's a new question.
What's that? Yeah. It must not.
Thanks, Brenda, for putting that together. Mr. Chair, I want to know why the commissioners don't have their face masks on.
We usually remove our face masks when we're speaking.
Okay.
So that people can, because some people read lips and have trouble hearing, so it's nice for them to be able to see us speak.
Mr. Chair, why is there an empty chair up there next to you?
That's because you're getting a flu shot, Commissioner.
I like sitting down here and asking you guys questions.
You look good doing it.
I'm waiting for my shot.
It's that easy. I didn't even feel it. It's that easy. I know people, some people fear shots, but I didn't even feel that. Wow. I was just making fun of those guys.
I just think you're tougher than most, Chair.
What?
I just think you're tougher than most. A hero. That's it, there you go, a hero.
Thank you very much. Actually, it's really convenient to go here. You don't have to go to any place.
I usually avoid doing my healthcare in public.
Oh.
Yeah, it's just not, it's a weird quirk.
Teach his own. Can we?
Yeah, go, let's see.
Add an item.
Okay. Carry on, Commissioner.
All right, Chair Willis, the first item I'd like to do is add an item to our action agenda, and that'd be a motion under the legal counsel, consider approval of an order ratifying the September 28th, 2020 request to Governor Brown for state and federal assistance with the household hazardous waste cleanup in the San Am Canyon.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
And now Chair Willis would like to make a motion to approve our consent calendar on it, and a Board of Commissioners, an OLCC application, a recommended approval for Veer Stern Two, LLC DBA Time Food Mart, and Lively Station LLC DBA Lively Station, and Sheriff's Office, approve a resolution extending the suspension of the Marion County Sheriff's Office Jail Capacity Management Plan through January 15th, 2021, due to COVID-19 emergency, and authorize the Marion County Sheriff to restrict lodging of arrestees and to allow release of inmates as appropriate to maintain health and safety.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Next up, we have Sydney here, maybe Ryan's here. Oh, Carissa, okay. Chris is here, and we're going to consider approval of the retroactive intergovernmental agreement with Polk County, the amount of $195,152 to provide funding for Polk County's rental assistance program for 15 units of rental housing from July 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2020. Good morning, Carissa.
Good morning, thank you for the record. I'm Carissa Neufelt, I'm the Human Services Division Director for Marion County Health and Human Services, and I'm here today to request approval of a retroactive intergovernmental agreement with Polk County for rental assistance services. So, to just explain a little bit about this. So, Marion County and Polk County both provide rental assistance to individuals who experience severe and persistent mental illness, and this is a housing-first program, which allows eligible individuals to seek housing first, and with the hope that they will be able to stabilize and be able to then engage in treatment services to further access health and community. So, for several years, we've been providing this service. The BCN, the Behavioral Care Network, has been the entity who has managed these funds for both Polk County and Marion County. However, this last biennium, when the BCN dissolved, the funds were transferred to Marion County, and apparently, due to some contracting issues with Polk County and what was in their existing intergovernmental agreements, the Oregon Health Authority was not able to contract Polk County's portion of the funds to Polk County. So, to help expedite things, we were asked to take on the full funding for both Polk and Marion Counties, which constitutes 60 bed slots that we provide rental assistance to. So their share is 15 beds, which is about 25% of the budget. So, the funding that we receive includes the rental assistance, any burial removal funds, as well as funding for some FTE and indirect costs. When the funding transferred over to us this biennium, we thought that there had been an error on OHA's part in regards to the amount of money that they gave us in prior biennia, and so we went back and forth several times, and then, of course, with COVID and some turnover in our leadership at the Health and Human Services Department, it ended up being sort of a slow process in terms of trying to get clarification on what the funding issues were. At the end of the day, OHA explained that what we believed was a reduction in funding was in fact the factor of them only giving us 18 months, because the OHA contracts now are in 18-month cycles versus 24 months. So, we have agreed that there was no funding reduction, and we need to move forward. In that process, because of the debates going back and forth between us and OHA, we didn't know what the amount was that we needed to be contracting with Polk County. So they proceeded, because they had been providing these services for several biennias as well, they proceeded to continue with the services, knowing that in good faith we would eventually reconcile the issues with OHA and be able to provide payment. So the $195,000 is what they have invoiced us for, for this, and what they anticipate through the rest of December 2020.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
No.
I have a question. Polk County, why couldn't Polk County make this contract work?
I actually stepped into this conversation in the middle of this biennia, but I'm not 100% clear, but my understanding is there was something in, that the OHA wanted or needs to have in the IGA that wasn't in the IGA, and it was too late in the process, given the state starts that contracting process usually about six months before they issue the contracts, and so for whatever reason, they weren't. So we have agreed with OHA that we would like this carved out in the next contract, so that we are separated from having to manage their funds.
So, did you find out what that was, and get us the answer to that?
Did I find out?
So could you?
Sure.
Okay. Because I do think it's a little bit strange for us to be administering another county's program.
Yeah, I mean, I think we were also a little confused about why they couldn't do it as well.
Okay. Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve a retroactive intergovernmental agreement with Polk County in the amount of $195,152 to provide funding for Polk County's rental assistance program for 15 units of rental housing from July 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2020.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Carissa. Okay, next up, we have Alyssa, and we're going to consider adoption of an administrative ordinance granting zone change comprehensive plan, ZCCP, case number 20-002, Allied Rock LLC, and the estate of Lois M. Stewart.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, this is Alyssa Schrems, Associate Planner with Public Works. The item before you today is an application for a zone change and comprehensive plan amendment on a property that is currently zoned exclusive farm use with a comp plan designation of primary agriculture, to change the comprehensive plan designation, or sorry, to change the zone to farm timber, and to change the comp plan designation to forest lands. The hearings officer conducted a public hearing on June 11th, 2020, and on July 14th issued a recommendation that the board approve the requested subject to meeting certain conditions. The board held a public hearing on August 12th, and after consideration, approved the request subject to conditions. The approval includes a condition that requires that no heavy truck traffic, including third-party haulers, utilize kingdom length to access Highway 22. The ordinance and findings have been prepared, and notice of adoption was given on September 23rd. The administrative order is now set for formal adoption. The board has the option of adopting the ordinance as written, direct staff to prepare a modified ordinance, choose not to adopt the ordinance at this time. Staff recommends that the board adopt the attached ordinance as written, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, Alyssa?
I don't have any.
I remember this hearing, it sounded, as I recall, was a pretty straightforward decision. Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
Then Chair Willis, I would make a motion, we do adopt the administrative ordinance to grant zone change comprehensive plan to case 2002, Allied Rock LLC, and the estate of Lois M. Stewart.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Passes. Thank you, Alyssa. And then finally, we have the item that was added. Jane, do you want to introduce this item?
Over the weekend, the governor's office sent a request to the board asking that the board formally request the state enter into a contract with the federal government for cleanup of household hazardous waste material in the canyon. And so at your regularly scheduled management update on Monday morning, you addressed this issue and directed Chair Willis to send that request in writing to the state, which he did. So today's board order is to ratify that action. The board order sets out the request, it is attached as Exhibit A, and again, ratifies that action, so we request that you do so.
Thank you, Jane. Any questions or discussion?
No.
Mr. Chair, a move that we ratify a letter, request, September 28th, letter request to Governor Brown for state federal assistance with household hazardous waste cleanup in the San Am Canyon.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we have a public hearing at 9:30, so...
Which we'll talk a little bit more about what this letter means.
Following our hearing.
At the conference, or the press release.
But we have to wait till 9:30 for a hearing, is that right? Yep. Okay, so we're going to recess for five minutes, and we'll come back and open a public hearing. hearing. We will reconvene and open a public hearing to consider adopting the Aurora-Donald Interchange Area Management Plan and conforming amendments. Good morning, Brandon and Janelle.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Janelle Shanahan, Marion County Public Works. ODOT has prepared an interchange area management plan to address needed interchange improvements at the I-5 Aurora-Donald Interchange. They have submitted the plan for adoption as an amendment to Marion County's Rural Transportation System Plan, which is the transportation element of the county's comprehensive plan. Amendments and changes to the comprehensive plan can be made by the Board after holding a public hearing on the proposed amendment. On August 26, 2020, the Marion County Board of Commissioners approved an order initiating amendments to the county comprehensive plan to consider concurring in an amendment to the Marion County Rural Transportation System Plan and scheduling a public hearing for today, September 30, 2020. ODOT and their consultant team initially considered 20 various design concepts for the Aurora-Donald Interchange that were narrowed down based on public and stakeholder feedback and further analysis, and ultimately selected the diverging diamond interchange design as the preferred alternative. The preferred alternative will require new construction of the I-5 Bridge over Ellen Road, as well as realignment of Ellen Road, Bentz Road, and Dolores Way. Realignment of these county roadways on EFU land in the vicinity of the interchange does not require a land use goal exception, but county conditional use approval will be needed before additional lanes on Ellen Road can be constructed. While some EFU land will be needed for the proposed improvements of the interchange, the widening of roadways where the proposed improvements occur do not create any new parcels or remove or displace any buildings, is consistent with Goal 3 and does not require a goal exception. Within the interchange area management plan, special access management requirements are established, as well as mobility standards for the interchange. ODOT has recommended that alternative mobility targets be set for the interchange as a result of the preferred alternative providing more capacity at the interchange ramps than what is needed in order to help preserve the additional capacity for growth beyond the 20-year planning horizon. With that, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, Janelle. Are there any questions for Janelle?
No.
Please continue.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Next is, ODOT is here, the applicant, to provide a summary of their presentation.
Hey, we match. I hate talking through these things. Morning, Chair Willis, members of the Commission. I'm Dan Frick, senior planner with the ODOT Region 2 office here in Salem. Well, thank Janelle for the staff report. I think she did a good job describing the basic elements of it without going into a lot. We've got this PowerPoint presentation that describes the project in a little more detail. If you're interested in seeing it, we can walk through it. Shouldn't take more than five or 10 minutes. Basically, it's a... Let's see if we... There we go. The summary of the issues that were originally identified in this interchange area, and I know Commissioner Brentano was one of the people that was instrumental in getting the legislature to go out there and look at this interchange when they were doing their road trips around the state prior to formulating the project list that was contained in HB 2017. So these are all the issues that were identified over time and things that we'd have to deal with in trying to reconfigure this interchange to make it operate better and more safely. The importance of the interchange is the major access in North Marion County. There's truck facilities, and it's very busy, and as you can see, 32,000 vehicles a day. Janelle already talked about this, and I'll just go very quickly through it. We started with a lot of ideas and basically screened it down to one is what it amounts to. Through a process, working with our stakeholders and with the local agencies, including the county. And the alternative that was identified pretty much by consensus of everyone involved is what's called a diverging diamond. It has some interesting elements to it from anything you've done. We've built one other interchange in this configuration of the state. It's now called the Fern Valley Interchange in the Phoenix-Talent area. Basically, what it does, it makes it pretty simple in that you don't have any opposing traffic to make left turns. And if I can get the arrow to go and just give you a quick show what if you're eastbound, you would come this way, and at this signal at the ramp terminal, you would actually cross over and drive across the structures, or in this case, underneath the structures, on the left side. And then if you wanted to turn left to go north, you would turn left without any opposing traffic. And then at the signal, you'd cross back over, continue on the right-hand side. My understanding is we've had a pretty good safety record. It's kind of like a lot of things that are new. We hear this a lot with roundabouts. People don't like roundabouts until they actually drive them a little bit and find out they actually work pretty well. And I think that's kind of the same experience we've had with the Fern Valley Interchange.
I got to interrupt. Some people will never like them. I just got to...
I won't disagree with that. And the information on the left-hand side just gives you the major changes or improvements that are proposed. Be constructing new bridges over I-5. It'll require them widening a little bit to get appropriate vertical clearance. Also require, because we'll be moving the southbound bridge over to basically create one structure, we'll have to slightly realign the southbound lanes to line up with that new bridge. Widening and lengthening both the on and off ramps in both directions, which is important. If you've been out there, you know especially the off ramps quite often back up into the main line at certain times of the day. Realigning and widening Ellen Road to get through the interchange. In a couple of places, in particular, Janelle mentioned this, that when we get, this would be part of a Phase 2 improvement, we will actually be adding a lane here, and this is EFU land, so this ultimately, when we get our, find funding for Phase 2, will require us to get a conditional use in this location. Realigning Bentz Road, you know, this has been a major issue for a long time for this interchange, for both the county and ODOT. And we worked with Travel Centers from America, the county worked with Travel Centers from America to come up with a line, an alignment that works for them better in terms of getting there, especially their truck traffic into their facility. And also proposing a realignment of Dolores Way farther to the east to move closer to meeting what we would like to achieve in the way of spacing between ramp terminals and private property access. We've broken the project down. As you know, HB 2017 provided funding for Phase 1 of the project. When that was identified, or when the bill came out, we didn't know what Phase 1 was or is. So we had to design the whole project to figure out what we could do with a Phase 1 project. So can see the major elements of Phase 1. It'll be constructing the new southbound bridge, realigning the I-5 southbound lanes, be lengthening and widening the off ramps, widening Ellen Road to get a left turn lane at each ramp terminal, and then signalizing the ramp terminals, and then the Bentz Road realignment. That construction cost is about $50 million, and we do know now that Phase 1 is fully funded. Janelle mentioned alternate mobility targets. We're proposing, I can talk about this a little more with Phase 2, but a phase set of alternate mobility targets at the ramp terminals to recognize how the facility will operate both with Phase 1 and during the build-out. We know we won't meet the mobility targets. Our highway plan defines the target we want to meet at the ramp terminals of a volume-capacity ratio of .85, which you can see the numbers down there are significantly higher than that. There's a real detailed description in the document that shows how we're getting that down to where we're going to try and, or will adopting and be asking the Oregon Transportation Commission to adopt this at a standard or a target of 1.0 with the completion of Phase 1. That becomes an amendment to the Oregon Highway Plan, part of the reason that we have to take this. Once we're done here, the last step in getting this interchange area management plan approved is have it adopted by the Oregon Transportation Commission, which now we're tentatively scheduled to be able to get to them in December. With Phase 2, completing the project, you see kind of the grayed-out areas underneath are the Phase 2 elements that will be added, including widening the on ramp, widening and lengthening the on ramps, widening and realigning Ellen Road further to get to the final configuration. We have to replace a stormwater trunk line. Construction cost for this whole, for Phase 2 is $29 million. You'll note that the first slide indicated if we were able to build this as one phase, the total cost was estimated, is estimated at about $72 million. We have to build it in phases. It'll come out to about $79 million. The additional cost is a combination of there are certain elements of this that are, I hesitate to call them throwaway, but things that we can't use in the full alignment, and also just the mobilization and other costs that come with restarting a second phase. The other thing you can see is that we get really good performance at full build-out in the 20-year horizon. Volume-capacity ratio is very low. So this phased alternate mobility target we're proposing is to adopt a mobility target of .6 at the ramp terminals, which is consistent with what we would need to meet according to our highway design manual, which is what we try to meet when we're actually building something. That is lower than the highway plan standard, but there are precedent, there is precedent for that in other locations in the state where we have adopted with a facility plan or mobility target that's lower than the highway plan.
Excuse me, can I interrupt?
Sure.
Because I'm a little bit confused about these targets you're talking about and about, it looks like there's two different numbers for the two different phases. Can you tell me what that means in like regular person language?
Well, basically, what we're finding is that we're getting with Phase 1, we've established essentially a standard. We call it a target. I go back and forth about why it needs to be, why it's a target as opposed to a standard for how we want a facility to operate. A lot of jurisdictions use volume-to-capacity ratio, some use level of service, which is the ABC scale that you've probably seen on some projects. Where we, in cases where, which is more often the case, where we can't meet the standard with what would be considered a reasonable level of improvement and investment, one of the options that the highway plan gives us is to adopt an alternate standard or target that we will try and manage the system to meet, which is what we've proposed to do with Phase 1, because we know we can't meet the target specified in the highway plan.
So can you go back a slide? So what does that mean? So the target you said was, is 85, .85, is that right?
In the highway plan, it's specified at a freeway ramp terminal of .85.
And it looks like it's going to be 1.43 and 1.97, is that right?
We've got a, yeah, what we've got is a very long-winded technical calculation that goes through four or five steps to get to a number that ultimately, we go through enough steps to say for certain hours of the day, and that's basically what this one amounts to, will manage it to operate at a volume-to-capacity ratio of 1, which is basically capacity. Basically, it is capacity. And we can achieve that for times of the day.
And what does that mean for me, the driver?
It means it's going to be congested, but based on what we know, how it operates now and what we expect it to operate with this Phase 1 improvement, it'll be better than it is today. We shouldn't see the long queues backing up into the main line with the extensions of the off ramps, which hopefully makes it, will make it a lot safer. It will probably, or it should improve your delay at the signal, plus having the signal there should improve the delay in terms of getting through there. I live in the area, so I know what it's like getting through there with all the trucks getting through. So you should see some improvement in the operation. You should be able to get through. You should, certainly at the ramp terminals, it'll be much easier for you if you're making a left turn.
Okay. And both...
Mr. Chair, I think a good question on that would be the like southbound ramp when you're coming south of Portland at 5 o'clock, that thing's backed up under the freeway.
Yes.
So that's that .97.
Yes.
Right? What is that today? Three?
I'm not sure. Well...
We don't know.
I think we do. Ed, do you have to ask one of the consultants if they know what the number is? I know it's over 1, and I know this made it better than the existing, but I don't recall what the number is. We couldn't get it all the way down. I mean, this was basically what, and this is at the northbound ramp, which is supposed to the southbound ramp. And the basic problem, well, the basic problem, well, certainly the northbound ramp, the big problem is left turns, the ones that really cause the backup are the left turns that cause the delay in the, in the exceeding the capacity. Southbound ramp, the left turn isn't as much of a problem, but you've got the ramp terminal plus Bentz Road plus eastbound and westbound traffic coming through that intersection to make it even hard to make right turns a lot of times of the day.
So you've mentioned .65.
Mm-hmm, .6.
.6, what does that mean? And how are you using that number?
Basically, .6 is the standard we try to design to at a ramp terminal. It's specified in our highway design manual. Basically, as far as the number goes, it means that we try to plan or try to construct where we're providing, or that we try to maintain it, that there's still essentially 40% excess capacity, if you will, or that we're using up 60% of the capacity. That's the standard.
And so your goal is that after Phase 2, that's where this intersection will be?
And that's what the numbers are showing us when... Oops, wrong line. That we're looking at with the full build, we're getting really good performance. And again, the highway plan as a planning standard would suggest or sets a target of .85. What we're recommending is, rather than that, to amend the highway plan mobility target down to .6, which is consistent with the highway development, highway design manual, which more than covers the operations we expect it to occur over the 20-year period with the full design. But that it also, as Janelle mentioned, preserves capacity, for all the excess capacity we're creating here, preserves that for the next increment of development beyond 20 years. We base all of our projections and all of our traffic projections based on the existing comprehensive plan. We don't speculate on what land use might be in the future. So that's the proposal, what we're recommending to you, and also will be recommending to the Transportation Commission that they adopt this amendment to set that mobility target with the full build when Phase 2 is completed.
I just have one more question then, Brandon. So you have a 20-year timeframe here. Do you have any thought as to when the next $29 million will show up? Because if it takes us 10 years to get there, then a 20-year timeframe from today doesn't make a lot of sense, right?
And a simple answer, as far as I know, is no.
Okay.
We know we funded Phase 1, and we were hoping we had applied, between us and the county, we'd applied for some federal grants that we thought would be competitive, and I think they were, but unfortunately, we didn't win either of those grants. If we had won either of those grants, I think we would have been, would fully, would have been fully funded for the whole project.
Got it.
But right now, the only thing we can guarantee is that we're fully funded for Phase 1.
Okay, thank you. Brandon?
It's Brandon Reich, Public Works Building and Planning Division Manager. I am not a transportation planner, but from my experience with SCATS and looking at these volume-to-capacity ratios, just wanted to add a couple of comments. Of course, the idea of the volume-to-capacity is how many cars you have coming through using an intersection or using a roadway versus what's the capacity of that roadway to handle that much traffic. And if you look at the graphs throughout the day, lots of times throughout the day, there's plenty of, there's plenty of capacity, and there's choke points, say in the morning or the afternoon commute, or maybe it's on Saturdays when people are shopping at a certain place where the volume-to-capacity ratio really shoots up. So the .85, the way I, the way I look at that is, if you've got, you've got kind of ideal out there where you've got an intersection or an area that's working, and you've got some new development come in, and then we look at, okay, what, how are you going to affect the volume-to-capacity? And you can affect it up to .85. And if you exceed that, then you have to look at what kinds of changes you can make to your development to accommodate that. But this is coming from the other direction. This is already exceeding the volume-to-capacity at that interchange, and we're trying to back that down into something that's more functional for people to use. When you look at the volume-to-capacity and when ODOT asks for alternative, alternative standards for that, alternative mobility targets, there are still components where they exceed the volume-to-capacity, and that may be, say, in a commute, like an after-evening commute, but most of the day, the volume-to-capacity is still lower. So this is bringing that down and improving it. To see the final ones at 1/3 of the volume in 20 years is actually a fairly incredible number. It's often, you can see when you do roadway improvements in the Salem area, like in the SCATS boundary, you might still be at .6, .7, .8, and still have achieved a lot of volume-to-capacity. So the final numbers are pretty great for this.
I should note one other thing about that, too, and that was a really good description. I'm not a transportation or traffic engineer, so I'm just... I'm not a transportation or traffic engineer, so I'm just close enough to it to be dangerous and trying to describe some of these engineering concepts or go over my head. Another thing to note about this, too, is that these projections, both for phase one and phase two, are based on a PM peak hour. So as Brandon said, trying to, if you will, average it out over a normal day as opposed to just what's going to happen, say, between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m., which is actually the standard we designed to.
Commissioner Brentano, you were right in some areas. Question?
Yeah, it's pretty well been talked about. I'm getting off of this particular hearing, but we have been, I have been working the last year and a half, two years, to try to get the entire project for the reasons you've heard and some you haven't. One, we could have done the entire two phases in the same time window that it takes just to do one, and then we still have it coming out. You see what I mean? Wouldn't it be better? Just get it over with, not displace traffic and everything for the construction. We're going to do it once and hopefully, and it's hopefully, do it all over again at some point in the future. It would have been cheaper, as mentioned. It would expand the capacity we've been talking about, but I really haven't heard, maybe Commissioner Cameron was kind of getting at it. It's a huge safety issue right now. That's why I'm all for this particular phase, at least we get this much done. But the queuing out, especially in the southbound lane, I personally, I don't drive it that often. In fact, if I ever go to Portland again in my life, I hope I get hit there. Shouldn't be there. But every time I have come back from that direction, I've been suddenly, traffic stopped, queued in the lane and foggy, there's still, you just watch for the accidents, what just happens too often. So that should get better and the workings will get better. I'm for this. I just wish we could have done the entire thing, entire project, and I hope, I've heard little different hints, I'll look at Ed over there, that perhaps that'll happen anyway, but let's get this in the books.
We're hopeful. Just a couple more things. This is mostly about schedule. Where we are now, you can see between August now, or August of 2020 through October '21, we're working on the IAMP, obviously, we're purchasing right, we'll be purchasing right away, completing the final design and construction plans, and we're scheduled to go to bidlet in November of next year. Construction's starting the following spring. It'll be a two-construction season project in 2020. You can see, well, you can see what'll happen in 2022 and 2023 in terms of the major elements of the phase one project that will get constructed in those years. Just to quickly mention, we've done a lot of public outreach. I know we've done several briefings for your commission over time. We've had a couple of briefings of both the Aurora-Donald City Councils. We've had stakeholder meetings, public open houses, and have also taken this to our mobility, the ODOT Mobility Advisory Committee. And as far as I know, everybody's on board with it. We haven't received any negative comments, to my knowledge.
Question, Mr. Chair? Yeah, the purchase of the right-of-way, is that going to include both phases?
No. We only have enough money to do phase one with the exception of a, and I'll go back and show you this, there is a two-acre parcel, about two-acre parcel right here that's really only necessary at this point for phase two. We are going to purchase that as part of the right-of-way because there is a significant archaeological site there. So while we're building phase one, we'll be out there doing resource recovery on that property. And we would need the whole property, that whole parcel anyway, so we do have the money to buy that. But other than that, we only have enough money to buy what we're doing with phase one.
And just to follow up, Mr. Chair, I know that you and I met with John back at Washington, DC. We've been back there twice trying to get that, working on those grants. I know we missed the first one. Did we get the final answer on the second one that we had applied for, too?
Far as I know, we didn't get either the infra or the build grants. That's, that's correct.
Is there, is there another window coming up on any of those grants to apply again?
I think they usually happen either, every year or every couple of years. I know I've been involved in some grant applications in the past. So I think part of the issue may be, I think we're coming up against a deadline where the current transportation bill needs to be reauthorized and be a question.
We were with Senator Merkley in Wyden, or I was on last weekend, and one of the thing, not this last week, yeah, it was Saturday, and one of the things they talked about was potential infrastructure bill in January, so we're still hoping maybe even some of that would, would happen. They were talking more about the canyon and the fires, but this would be a big project that, it's been a priority for us for a long time.
I think if the money was made available, we'd be more than happy to build it as a single phase.
You'd be able to move in the middle of it, yep.
So with that, if you have any additional questions, we would support the staff's recommendation for you to adopt the Interchange Area Management Plan. And can answer any other, hopefully between me and the other folks that are in the room, we can answer any other questions you've got.
I don't have any further questions. I just want to compliment ODOT and how fast and how efficient you've been moving on this project. It's really, really appreciated by us, and I know the constituents that live up in that area and travel it every day, so thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll keep working together to try to find that other 20, it would be, from what I heard, it would be only 22 million versus 29 million. Who knows? We just need $30 million.
If it was done at one time.
Get your checkbook out, Commissioner.
Twenty-two.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was a great presentation. Do we have a motion making here?
I will.
Brandon, who's?
Yes, I will, if you're ready.
You have the motion?
Unless there's some final statement, I might say there's no one signed up for, to testify one way or another, but just for the record, there were a number of, and I didn't hear him talk about a number of, I guess you call hearings, workshops, availabilities, like at North Marine High School, City of Aurora, in that area, and everything I watched was positive. People want it done. So Chair Willis, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing and adopt the Aurora-Donald Interchange Area Management Plan and the conforming amendments.
So that's good. Concur in the amendments. Okay, good, got it. I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, Commissioner Brentano. Thank you. That concludes our agenda. Commissioner Brentano, will you read the calendar?
If I could find it, I would. Chair Willis, coming in the next week or so, starting 11 o'clock today, we have a BOCCao meeting, executive session if needed pursuant to ORIS 1926602 in about every letter you could have at the Commissioner's Boardroom, fifth floor, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. This afternoon at 3 o'clock, FEMA briefing for local elected leaders at Saniam High School Gym, 265 Southwest Evergreen Street in Mills City. Tomorrow, 8:30 to 9:00, a fire update in the Commissioner's Boardroom. Friday, 8:30, fire update, Commissioner's Boardroom. Monday, the 5th of October, 8:15, calendar review, Commissioner's Boardroom. That's followed at 8:30 by another fire update, Commissioner's Boardroom. And after that, at 9 o'clock, management update also, right there, Commissioner's Boardroom. Tuesday, 8:30 to 9:00, fire update, Commissioner's Boardroom. 2 o'clock to 3 o'clock, Health and Human Service Policy Group, Commissioner's Boardroom. And Wednesday, 8:30 to 9:00 is again a fire update. I guess I should just be saying we'll have those as long as we need to, and that'll be in the fifth floor, 555 Court Street. Next Wednesday at 9 o'clock, board session here in the Senator Hearing Room, and that's followed at 11 o'clock on the October 7th with a Board of Commissioners policy meeting, Commissioner's Boardroom.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our agenda this morning, so we will adjourn our board meeting.
... lowering some. That information will come out on our website and through our public information, folks as well. Beyond that, the only other thing I was going to mention, we continue to have patrols up in the area, just keeping an eye on what's going on up there. And then we've gotten some reports of some possible dumping, some illegal dumping, and there are several criminal statutes related to that, so we want to be careful, and we'll be looking into those types of things. There's going to be a lot of information from the commissioners about how to take care of some of the cleanup, but just wanted to pass that on as well.
And Sheriff, you moved Detroit back from a Level 3 to a Level 2 and opened Detroit back up in a limited capacity, is that right?
Yes, they still have the ongoing trips in and out all the way up to Detroit and Idana while they're still cutting the trees and making that road safe again as well.
And those trips, pilot cars are guiding residents between Gates and Detroit every day. The first pilot car departs Gates, departs Detroit to Gates, is that right?
There's, there's one early in the morning now from Detroit to Gates.
From Detroit to Gates.
And then we're back to that normal schedule, and then those will continue for foreseeable future.
Okay, and so for folks that want to get back up there, they can, they can, I guess there's a car that goes up at 9 o'clock in the morning and comes back at 11:00, and then a car that goes up at 1:00 in the afternoon and comes back at 5:00, is that right?
Yes. And then that early morning one is 7:30 in the morning that is going from the cities of Detroit and Idana down to Gates to let people through that area in case they need to come to the valley for the day.
And that's for folks who spent the night up there?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yesterday, we sent, or I sent a letter or an email to the governor asking the state and FEMA to assist us with cleanup of household hazardous waste. This will be done at the cost of the state and federal government. It'll be a 75%, 25% split between FEMA and the state. We'll continue to be involved in that effort, and we ask that, we ask for three things. We ask that citizens not be penalized for cleaning up or hiring qualified contractor to clean up their own property safely. We ask that the state provide an information sheet to all of our citizens, and that the state and federal cleanup will prioritize watershed areas. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we still are asking people who benefited by this wildfire to sign up for FEMA disaster relief at disasterassistance.gov, and FEMA has now located representatives at Anthony Hall in Sublimity, so you can actually go and speak to someone who works for FEMA, and they can walk you through that process and get you any assistance that's available to you. So with that, I'll see you have it.
I will. Chair Willis just kind of got over the subject about debris management. It's something the county's working very hard on now. I'm going to have to ask a little patience, and I'll tell you why before we get through. This two-part program the commissioner was talking about, one has, and I mentioned it last week, too, has FEMA coming through and taking care of household hazardous waste, and then Corps of Engineers coming doing the final real ash and foundation and cleanup of the lots. It's a program I'd like to see, if it can, if we can pull the trigger on it and get agreement how to do it, it can be the quickest and the cleanest, and it's really important to me that the ash from the forest is one thing, but the ash from structures, homes, cars is quite another, and we want to get those off, off the watersheds. They otherwise, they will be, I don't want me to be scaring everybody, but I don't want them draining into the creeks and into Detroit and wherever else it goes. It's really important that we can remove all that. The other thing, if we can get this done, it's the quickest. We could all, it could be all cleaned up in, well, we've had a story of just a couple months after they start. I don't know if that's reasonable. Just yesterday, we had a presentation from the city administrator from Malibu, California. They'd had a similar fire, much smaller, but she talked about this program working out just as advertised, and we got to give it a chance. Otherwise, it's going to be helter-skelter. We won't be sure we get it all cleaned up, and I think this is a much better way. The sheriff talked about some illegal dumping. I just don't think we can tolerate that. We want to get these things cleaned up, but it isn't like, the stories I'm hearing, this is anecdotal, but pickups going full into the woods and coming back empty. I just can't tolerate it. That leaves those pollutants there for somebody else to deal with, get into the streams we're talking about, and I'm, I'm just going to ask if we find any of that going on that's truly beside it, both as county ordinance, DEQ, and probably some federal regulation on Forest Service, so we're just not going to tolerate it.
Thank you. Brian, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I do have some additional details on the cleanup program that Commissioner Brentano was just talking about. At Public Works, I know in a lot of different departments, we're getting questions from folks that are frustrated, wanting to know details, and so we're working really aggressively with ODOT and our federal partners to get those details pinned down and out to people as quickly as we can. So the state has formed a statewide task force to deal with debris management, so that's the first piece, and that's the two-step program that the commissioner was talking about. This is the same kind of program that other states have done, the two-step process, take, handle, take care of the household hazardous waste first, get that dealt with, and then look at the larger cleanup effort and pull together a coordinated effort on that as well. So two-step process, like we talked about. The household hazardous waste cleanup, you know, that really just focuses on things like batteries, fuels, chemicals that are, that are, that are there and typically present in every home regardless of what, you know, when the home was built. And that is the first easy step to take care of because we could do it under the existing FEMA authorization. So that's the reason why that's a priority focus right now. So the plan from the state level is they've asked EPA to lead that charge. EPA has done this in a number of other places, so they've got a fairly well-worked-out program. We are expecting to see boots on the ground mid-October for that first phase of the cleanup effort. We've got insurance from the state. There is no cost to homeowners or insurance providers for that. It is, all of that is taken care, all those costs are taken care of in the FEMA program itself. And we, Marion County, were asking the state to prioritize Saniam Canyon because of the sensitivity of the watershed and the number of, well, the population that relies on the river for drinking water. So we're working with the state on that aspect of it. Step two, what everybody's calling the ash and trash cleanup, that's the larger effort, really taking care of the bulk of debris from vehicles and homes, that sort of thing, not from timberland, but from, from those residences and businesses. Still some details to work out on that. FEMA has not yet authorized the funding for that phase of cleanup, and the state and the feds have about another week worth of process to go through to get to that step, so we are in a process, and that's, that's one of the reasons why we don't have all the details until those authorizations are finalized. But the, the plan is to do a large-scale coordinated cleanup effort across all the counties that are affected. Again, that'd be led either at the state or the, or the federal level with input from the county, so we can help them understand what the priorities are and what our particular needs in the county are. The timeline on that one is not pinned down yet, so we're hearing that once they hit the ground, it's typically, like Commissioner Brentano said, a couple of months on something our size, so, but we won't have those dates until maybe a week from now or so, so there'll be more information coming out about that. All right, to part.